We call a meeting to order. Have a pledge allegiance and a prayer led by councilman.
Pledge allegiance is intended to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we Lord, we're just are ever so thankful that as citizens, we have the opportunity to represent those in our community, and we just ask for your wisdom and your guidance in so doing. May we make decisions which will benefit our community, make our community a better place to live, be with each of those that are charged with keeping our community safe, be with those that are watching over our healthcare end of things to our, this virus does not get out of hand again, to rest in peace.
And make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Item D, citizen comments. Anybody in the crowd that'd like to say a few words? How you doing, neighbor?
Doing good. My name's Chris Cole. I live west Cedar Point, Pear Town. My wife and I run Mrs. Cole's Tropical Snow over here going with me. Last time I was here, I gave you guys a heads up that we were looking into buying some property, and we're outgrowing the space that we're in, and we need to do something to continue our old business. The next morning, we got an email from Mica that said, "Hold off on that. Somebody wants to push towards eminent domain of that property." I don't know what all that means. I'm not going to pretend that I do. But what my wife and I took away from it was it seemed like maybe somebody doesn't want us to have that property. So I wanted to take this opportunity just to let you guys know that when we started this little business, it was just a little snow cone shop, and we didn't expect it to be much. It was just something fun for my wife to do in the summertime when she wasn't working at the school. But we've been really embraced by this community. Not just this community, Garden Blaine, Cheney, Kingman, Mays. We have regular customers from the east side of Wichita, Derby, Bel Air. And they don't just come here for us. We go hand to hand with that park. Everything you guys have done at that park has made our business grow, and together with it has created an environment at this corner over here where lots of families like to hang out and spend their days. And so whenever we saw that we might have an opportunity to buy property directly across the street, where it could be ours, and we could build what we envision instead of renting property that we are limited with, we got excited, and we would love the opportunity to build something there that we can call ours, and that we can embellish upon and make it an even better place for the community to spend time. You know, all we wanted was a safe place for kids riding their bikes around town to stop in and get a treat. Sometimes they just get a glass of water. If they come in, we talk to them, and it's a great place for them. Their parents trust if they can come up there, and it's a good place for them. And then there's families. You look out on the sidewalk, and it's not just a family coming up and getting a snow cone. They talk to each other. They hang out. There's a complete baseball team that are celebrating out there, and it's just a great place for a community to spend time. And we're proud to say that we have that, and that we've created an atmosphere like that, and we would like the opportunity to make it even better.
You're talking about the property just located.
Yeah, right over on the inside of the alley.
What email exchange was this between you and Mica?
We got an email from Mica. We had made an offer that was accepted by the landowner, and so Mica said, "We need to come in and express to you guys what our plan was," just to give a heads up. So I did that. The very next day, he said, "Hey, hold off. Don't give them any money, because if you guys do the eminent domain thing, then I could be out some of that money that I paid for it." So we held off, and I don't want to lose it, but I don't want to lose any money either. So we're holding off. So I just wanted to plead my case.
The email exchange is news to me, so I apologize for that. We certainly would have told you not to pursue that.
And the email, then?
Without the council giving us some formal reaction one way or the other.
Just to clarify, I didn't say one way or another to not pursue something or to pursue anything. I simply said that if there was a consideration by eminent domain by city council that if the courts decided that under an appraisal, it would be deemed less valuable than the exchange of currency that was done between the two property owners, then he'd be out of the difference. That's all I said. There was no definitely hold off, or definitely proceed, or anything of that nature. It was simply that if there is any consideration by city council to do eminent domain, then if, like I said, if the court appraised it differently than what he contributed to Mr. Kimball, then there would be a different statement. He'd be out of that defense.
What's the current status on where we're at with?
There's been no demolition permit hold so far by Mr. Kimball.
We've just been waiting?
Technically, he has until this Thursday for that resolution to kick into effect.
And you'll see this again in my staff report, where I kind of provide a calendar update and say that we have until essentially August 2nd to, we would like at staff to bring forward the raising of the property. And then if the property owner in the meantime were to have, as it's situated, or as the resolution stipulates, wants to request more time, or any sort of additional ask of the city or the governing body, we would obviously present it at that time at the August 2nd meeting, is what we're kind of tentatively scheduling now.
What does Mr. Coleman do if he wants to try to purchase the property?
Well, it's certainly within the count, well, huh? Well, we've condemned the property, and with the condemnation means that there's 60 days to be raised. Now, the council can extend that period or allow for this transaction to occur. However, we have declared that the structure's unsafe and dangerous. So that's the issue that I think Mica may have been alluding to, plus if it falls through, because we had the property owner and another potential purchaser here at the city council meeting when this was first brought to our attention, who assured us that they had a contract in place, and then that fell through. So what we want to make sure is, is that we are not impinging upon the property rights of any individual who owns the property or may hold the property. But at the same time, we have to make sure that we're moving forward at a pace that's fast enough to remediate the situation. So if, and I don't, I don't want to get out of my lane, which is general, not legal, and that's, that you need to make certain that that property is moving forward for remediation. Because as Mica said, if you're under contract and then we go in and raise it, then, you know, there's several different scenarios for how that recovery could play out. But we did so specifically under the statute 12-1115, which means essentially we would assess that to the property itself. So it would even delay, or could potentially delay closing, even if you did have a successful transaction occur for the property.
And I think my concern is I don't want a potential business, or current business, who's looking to expand to get, pardon my word, screwed over by going ahead and trying to purchase it when we're in the middle of all of this, when I think my understanding was if you guys hold off and it's all said and done, and the city then has the property, then we can choose to put it up for sale, correct?
We can choose to put it up for sale, or it could go to the sheriff's. So I would defer to Ryan for the legal process for all of our different options. But we have many options, which is why I think with Mica's email, he was saying, "This isn't, this isn't a cut and dry situation, unfortunately."
Right.
And there's a lot of moving parts to that. So we want to make sure that, again, that the structure's taken care of, and that you're held harmless and not out any money, first of all, and then how we go about doing this in a fair and equitable manner for all parties moving forward, so.
My thought has always been Mr. Kimball has been up, forthright, and honest with us and dealing us in the past. And so my concern is I would like to keep on going with our condemnation of it, to put the pressure on him to either wreck the place and it's out, or just allow us to take it over after we demolish it and pay our expenses or whatever, and then make a decision there on what to do with it after that. If we don't keep the pressure on him, I'm just afraid that he's just going to do like he did last time, and he'll just play us along for another two, three months, and then nothing happened, and it'd still be standing, and nobody owns it yet except him. And so I don't know, I'd go to Ryan and ask him if we can continue with the condemnation, and after all is said and done, then we can sell it to whoever or whatever. Is that what you think, Brian?
Well, the condemnation process has already been initiated. So what happens is if the property owner fails to comply, fails to remediate the property and bring it back into code, then the city has the right to go in without further notice and to raise the property, basically demolish it, and then assess the cost of that demolition to the property. The way that lien on the property would be enforced is through foreclosure of the lien. So we would basically, we'd file a lien statement with district court, also probably with the register of deeds that details out what our expenses were, indicates that we're claiming a lien against the property. We would then, if we wanted to enforce that lien, foreclose the property, we would file a petition in the district court initiating basically a lawsuit to foreclose our lien and force the property to be sold by the sheriff, the proceeds to be paid to satisfy our lien. Now, oftentimes, what happens in a foreclosure is if there are no other interested bidders there, or people are wanting to bid less than the lien amount, we just credit bid our lien amount. So we say, let's say, just for easy math, let's say our lien is $10,000. So we show up, we'll credit bid $10,000. We're not coming out of pocket for, we're just pledging our interest in that lien as our bid to buy the property, essentially. Now, other third parties could be there. It's a public auction. If they're interested, they can bid over that amount to acquire the property. If we are the high bidder, the property gets awarded to us. We become the record title owner of that property. Then we're free to do with it whatever we want. So that's kind of the condemnation process in a nutshell. I think alternatively, and I know some of you have expressed interest in that property for purposes of city use. If there's interest on the part of the city, separate and apart from that condemnation, you can use eminent domain potentially to acquire that property. And basically, a three, there would be three appraisers that would be appointed to value the property, and that amount would be paid to the property owner as just compensation for the acquisition of the property. And so, so I think at the end of the day, you all have to decide, are you interested in having that property or not? I mean, we can move forward with the condemnation, which will hold the property owner accountable, force him to remediate the condition of the property. That doesn't mean necessarily that we have to go forward with immediately with foreclosure of the property. But I think the fundamental question you guys have to ask yourselves is, are you wanting that property, or are you fine with Mr. Cole or somebody else having that property, provided that the city gets reimbursed for the cost of raising the property? I have no idea what that property is worth. And one item that also complicates the circumstances is that that's zoned residential. And I know, like when we've done visioning, we had discussed a parking area for the park, or eventually a community center space, or whatever. But certainly, if there's going to be a productive business on there, then that's something that I know that the council spoke favorably of in the past, everyone on this bench. But that entails changing the zoning classification, informing neighbors, having a public hearing, saying, "Okay, our intended use is changing from residential to commercial." And that, that's a whole separate process, and something for which is beyond, you know, the purview of this discussion, because we just kind of keep throwing more scenarios in there. But it is, it is, it is very, very complicated. Can I ask a few questions of Mr. Cole? Mr. Cole, I mean, are you wanting the structure on that property, or would it be your intent to demolish it as well?
It was our intent that it was going to be condemned, and it would have to be torn down.
Okay, okay. And do you have any written contract yet with Mr. Kimball?
No. We have verbal, he accepted verbally an offer, and we have approval through the banks, and everything's laid out, ready to be finalized. It's just.
Okay, so there's no written contract, there's no closing date or anything like that? Have the two of you talked about an anticipated closing on the transaction?
No.
Okay. So, I mean, one way, one way to look at it is, I mean, I think the city still has to decide, does it want that property for its own purpose? But it sounds like Mr. Cole, if he were to go forward with the transaction, he doesn't intend to keep that structure on the property. So, you know, perhaps we could continue to move forward with the condemnation and the demolition, assuming that Mr. Kimball doesn't do it on his own, and it wouldn't be.
It'd go to sheriff.
Pardon me?
It'd go to sheriff's option.
No, what would happen is we would demolish it, so the city would advance the costs associated with demolishing it, and Mica can speak more to it than probably I can, in terms of what the county would require in terms, as far as demolition. I think we would have to demolish it down to grade or below grade.
We're going to do below grade.
And then, so we would incur that expense. We would file our lien against the property to protect ourselves. That way, you know, if the property gets sold, or, you know, something happens, we're going to get paid first to recoup our expenses. We don't have to immediately proceed with foreclosure. Now, I don't believe the statute says anything about how much time we would have to initiate foreclosure proceedings. I know in the context of a mechanic's lien, usually you have one year from the date the lien is filed in order to enforce that lien and to file a foreclosure petition. So I don't think it's something that necessarily we would have to file a lien and then immediately proceed to foreclosure at sheriff's. So if that's a route that y'all are interested in, I think we can still continue down that route. I mean, Mr. Cole can speak up if he has concerns if we weren't proceed with demolition, but it doesn't sound like that would necessarily be inconsistent with what he's intending to do with the property anyways.
So really, we need a consensus that the city wants to.
Yeah, although I would recommend not having that here tonight on an off the gin diet, just for transparency. That may be a conversation we would want to have in executive session. And on August 2nd, when we're kind of anticipating the demolition.
Well, how about we, how about we do that? How about we allow the council to have their conversation?
Or August 16th, because I know I get into conflict. Yeah, I'll be on, I'm on vacation the week of the 2nd. So maybe the 16th. Yeah, I'll be 16th.
But Mica has your email, right? And so, one, just for sake of communication, once we get a consensus on what we want to do, is this the right thing? I'm asking, could Mica email him after you get?
Well, it would be consensus, we would do that in a public meeting, and then from there, it would, it would be broadcast, and then he would be able to attend, or Mica could email him following the meeting as to the findings and direction of the council.
Well, I'll just add that I've always wanted to make sure that Old Town Goddard State Bible, state businesses, and that the city would continue to try to keep its businesses downtown to support the local businesses. And frankly, I'm not putting a lot of faith in Mr. Kimball's work. And so I think from my part, I'd like to see the condemnation continue, and that would at least raise the property to where now something's got to be done with it. He's got to pay us for the demolition, or we start filing a lien or something. He can't just sell it for another year, saying he's going to sell it, promising somebody they're going to get it, and then it never happens. But that's the sort of where I stand for a while, would like to continue with this process.
We just don't want to miss out.
Right, yeah. And we, I, myself, and I want you guys to stay here and continue to provide the this excitement, because like you said, it does bring a lot of people into our community, and it has started, I think, revitalization of downtown.
And brings a lot of smiles to downtown.
There's always people there. I mean, I never, don't see people there when you guys are over there, so.
We'll be sure to keep the ball rolling, and make sure that, you know, it's moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else saying none? Move on to item E. You want?
Just wanted to take this time to acknowledge Captain Beagle is our interim chief of police. This is his second rodeo, so to speak, in the position, and I know I've enjoyed working with him in the past in that capacity, and look forward to doing so again. And so Lance Springs, 15 years here in Goddard, he's literally grown with the department. He's been here a few more years, maybe a year and a half.
I haven't put on that much weight, but I mean, it's been slow.
Did he sign like a 10-year contract, or?
Yeah, so I just wanted to take the time to acknowledge Captain Beagle, and I think it speaks well to the work that Chief Ferris did here in streamlining the organization and trying to have a promote from within. And we certainly know that Lance is someone that we can rely on to lead the agency during this interim period, and look forward to working with him after as well.
Thank you.
And then the next item is E2, which is to acknowledge that Mica recently completed his master's in urban planning from USC. And so with that, now he's working on his, his planning accreditation, or certification, I think is what it's called. And he's now officially our, kind of as the reward, he's our community development director, director of community development. So wanted to take this time to acknowledge that as well.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Consent agenda? Uh, Mr.? Everybody take what you can.
On the consent agenda, we have the July 6 regular meeting minutes, accounts payable for October 14, 2021, for $263,821.75. And we also have receive and file the June 14, 2021 library board minutes and the June 14, 2021 planning commission minutes.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. If no one has any questions.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
H1, 2021-3 bit acceptance of resolution authorizing Arbor Creek Phase 2.
Honorable mayor and council, we have the resolution authorizing the sale of the Phase 2 Arbor Creek addition, special assessments for paving, water, sewer, and stormwater. We also have bond.
We also have bond counsel Kevin Cowan here to, to answer any questions that you may have. Phase 1 was done back in May 6 of 2019. Phase 2 was authorized on June 21 of this year with the resolutions for sanitary sewer being 2128, stormwater 2129, paving 2130, and water distribution 2131. This is 100% financed by the improvement district and zeroed by the city at large. At the July 6, 2021 meeting, the council adopted Resolution 2134, which set the solicitate, authorized staff and bond counsel to proceed with the solicitation of bids for the issuance. And we had an 11:00 AM bid opening today. We received three bids. What we're specifically focused is this purple color here, this is phase 2, with these two red components being the phase 1. Bids were accepted at 11:00. The best bid was by Country Club. And essentially, the terms for three years maturing on October 1, 2024. It's a general obligation, as is common for all special assessments, which means that we'll levy the property taxes necessary to make the payments. The resolution specifically authorized the Marion City Clerk and others to take the necessary actions to finalize the sale of the notes and to proceed with the transcript certificate issuance and agent agreement, underwriting agreement, and closing certificates. These documents are presented as Exhibit A in the resolution, specific to the bid award that you'll be approving today for the 930,000 principal amount for the general obligation tent note, Series 21-3. The maturity date we previously mentioned, best bid was Country Club Bank, and we did so with a net interest cost of 17,414.25, which was the lowest interest of the three bids, and a true interest cost of just over half a percent. Any interest savings from the difference in the bid, we hold that in contingency until the project's completed in case it's needed, and then at that time it's applied to the principal. So they'll actually be 15 to 16 grand less than, than what we actually levied, or issued off of that 930,000. Again, just saying that it's a general obligation. The developer is 100% of the property district and complies with Rule G32 of the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. The documents were constructed by bond counsel Kevin Cowan and reviewed and approved as deformed by city attorney Ryan Peck, and it's effective upon passage. What I would like, if there are no questions for Kevin or myself, is for you to make the motion to accept the best bid and authorize and direct the Marion clerk to execute the bid form, selling the notes to the best bidder, Country Club Bank, on the basis of bid terms specified and the notice of sale. That can be done with a voice vote.
Motion.
Motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
We need to accept the bid first and authorize and direct.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then the second part is what Councilman Zimmerman alluded to, is to approve the resolution by waiving the reading of the resolution and then approving what the rule calls.
I'd like to waive the reading and the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michael, second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. All in.
Councillor Traylor?
Yes.
Councillor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councillor Linkland?
Yes.
And Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councillor Proctor?
Councillor Proctor. And it'll be Resolution 2135.
It's the heat that's getting to you.
Honorable governing body, here, here we have air conditioning units. I think we can all agree that AC is a great thing. So recently, the air conditioning, as we noticed at the last meeting, in the city council chambers went out, or the courtroom went out. So all-in-further inspection of those units, they're twinned together. We'll discuss that a little bit later on. They're both Lennox units. Upon looking at them, they're both from 2003. One is nearly, is not functional and nearly beyond repair. Out of all five companies we talked to, including the original company that came out and diagnosed it, they all said that it would not be worth fixing at its age. So four companies all recommended replacing those two units, twinning them together and moving a newer unit that's outside over to an existing spot. I'll kind of show you here. So basically, we have these two older AC units. They're both Lennoxes. The two on the right side, B and C, actually are twinned together at the furnace and power this room, our kitchen break room, our server room, which gets very hot, and then also part of the detective's office in the police department. So power's quite a big area, so actually the AC is working right now, it's just all running off of this single four-ton unit, which can barely keep up, and it hasn't been 100 degrees yet, really. So what we're talking about doing would be moving this unit over to the left and getting two new units right here, twinning those together to power the council chambers, and that way it can keep up and we can get those two together on a better maintenance schedule. This unit is only about two years old, so it'll make a good unit to power what is all of the administrative offices. So we also wanted to quote routine maintenance and service on all five of our air conditioning units, because currently, the company we currently use or sometimes use, they don't put new units in, they just kind of repair existing units, and we don't have a service plan necessarily. They come out twice a year. So we also quoted a service plan for maintenance on all five units twice a year and then quarterly filter changes inside. So of the four people we had to come out and take a look, only three gave us a quote. So Airsource recommended two new rear units at the cost of 9,200 and moving that existing unit to the left side for 1650. They also recommended moving supply ducts to the PD area to power a room that didn't get vent in the last remodel. So that bid was 14,150. Hannah was the second bidder. They quoted those two new AC units at 6410 and $1,200 to move that existing unit to the left side and that service cost of 1320 per year to total the quote out at 8,930. And then Phoenix was our third and final bid. They kind of quoted it all together, those two new, two new Lennox units at a cost of 8326, planned yearly service cost of 110630, and then that total job cost would be 9,43230. So if approved, that would be allocated to the general fund, City Hall Repair and Maintenance Building, line item 10, 150, 6140. The new AC units would be allocated to the 90, 150, 7370 Capital Improvement Fund for City Hall Furniture and Fixtures. So right now, I'll field any questions.
So my question is the Phoenix quote?
Yes.
It's 500 more right now, but every year on the service, we're going to save 200 dollars, and it has five-year warranty on the parts, not just the compressor. So I'm curious why we would go with Hannah versus looking at the long-term and go with Phoenix?
Between the two that I've identified, I don't have a recommendation, one or the other. We're recommending the low bid on the project, but I, I think Phoenix came out and, and provided a, you know, a good, fair bid. So that's, that's ultimately going to be up to the governing body, whatever, whatever you guys think. But I think either way would be a safe option.
Is it necessary to move that supply duct?
The other two didn't?
Yeah, what's the thing? Uh, there was also something in your, I'm sorry about, there's also, all three basically quoted that.
Okay.
So that was, that was my mistake. They all quoted that extra vent in that service cost. So any of those three, I believe, would, would be moving that duct.
Did we get a quote from?
TNT.
TNT.
And then right across the street?
I, I did not, was not able to get a quote from them. I called about 10 people and that these were the three. There was four that actually came out, one couldn't get us a quote, but these three got us a quote.
But you did reach out to them?
I, I'm not aware that I did, so I could certainly try to reach out to them in the interim and if they...
I think business are local, we should reach out to them.
Yeah, let's reach out tomorrow, see if they can get us a, a quick bid.
I thought that we had, and that they couldn't have the bid, or that, I think we called them the day of the incident that it occurred, and they couldn't get out. And so I don't know, but I may be mistaken because we were calling a bunch, a bunch that day, so.
Can we, can we do a quick agreement, like if?
I would just, I recommend if you want us to get another bid, that we, we take no action and then we solicit a new bid.
Why don't you just approve 10,000? And that would at least cover it, and we want you to recommend, you reach out to TNT. Leave it up to you guys to get it done. So, thanks.
Well, we might be spending more money than necessary, but I mean, if, if we're, we could add, there'd be two things, we could get a quote from TNT.
Well, I mean, the AC is working, so if we, you know, if we had to push it to the second, you know, we certainly could, and maybe two, three.
And if something happens, at least we approve you.
Is it keeping our server room cool enough? With the strain on it? That's my concern.
There's always a strain on the server room.
Yeah, the server room could almost use a mini split, but we, we decided to hold off on that for now, so.
Can we pick on, can we pick on one of these? If TNT comes in?
Comparable with the coverage?
If TNT comes in not competitive, then they can just go with Phoenix or Hannah or Airsource?
Are we allowed to do that?
Right. Can we, that needs addressing.
Well, that's why I approve them.
Yes.
Well, then let's pick one of these on TNT.
Although I would, TNT knows what the, what everyone's bid.
Oh, gotcha. So that makes it up.
At one point, Brooke brought up, he said that TNT was pretty far out on, at least.
We, we ordered a, a new HVAC unit for the chlorine building, and they were the best bid, and they do good work. But one of the things that helped us choose is everybody has a lot of time, eight to 10 weeks before they get their units. Now, in this situation, you may want to choose someone, someone who has a units in stock, because if the heat hits, we may have an issue down here.
I see. So, so did they all have it in stock?
As far as I know, I'm, I'm almost 100% sure that, that they both said they stocked units, so neither one of them brought up that there was like an eight-week lead time or anything. They indicated they'd get out here in the next few weeks.
We know for a fact TNT.
On our unit, they did have an eight-week, eight to 10-week lead time, and I've heard that at other places, having lead time.
Yeah, only two months.
That's what we got.
Remember, we're going to get up to close to 100 next week again.
We don't want to be here, right?
Okay, all right. Okay, motion. Second by Brent. Second by Michael. Well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. You're always right.
I know. I don't think my...
Honorable members of the councils, I'm H3. This is a resolution amending the master fee schedule. So city fees are designed to cover the cost of providing selected services to individuals, groups, and business entities. At the November 17, 2014, City Council meeting, City Council adopted a resolution establishing a consolidated master fee schedule to assist city staff and public in quickly locating appropriate fees. Food trucks have become more prominent in cities recently, and every city has approached how, has approached differently how they want to handle licensing. Food trucks have a long history and date back to the pioneer era where Chuck Laggett would follow cattle drives across the prairies, so it's kind of an interesting tidbit there. And then they not only serve to fill a gap for restaurants in the city, but help facilitate a communal aspect for events and attract businesses from around the surrounding area. So the analysis is the proposed resolution basically removes these two from the master fee schedule. We would no longer charge fees for food trucks, either for, you know, any, any kind of serving any type of specialty foods or ice cream or anything of the, we would just simply remove it. And so food trucks, we would simply say, come one, come all. If you guys want to come to any event at any time during the city, you're welcome to, and we will not charge you a fee or anything else of that nature. We do want to mention that such a county is requiring that food trucks be registered through the fire department for fire code. Other than that, it would simply be, you know, you're welcome to come in the city for any event that we have, and we don't want to charge you for that. In the past, we've waived fees for any city-sponsored events or city-partnered events, but in this case, even private events wouldn't need to register the food trucks or have a fee charged. So we've done a general analysis of the surrounding areas to kind of see, we charge about 25 dollars per quarter, 100 dollars for the whole year. Most people just pay 25 because they're only coming for one event and they may not be back. And there's really only so many months out of the year in Kansas where you can kind of hang out around food truck. Anyway, Mays and Andover Bel Air was not able to locate any type of fees that they have. Derby does have 25 dollars for one week, 50 for one month, and 200 for six months, which total charge is 50, 50, 250, and 400 respectively. Financially, none. Legally, it's approved as deformed. The resolution, if you do consider it adopted, doesn't need any publication and taken force immediately, so it would just, we'd no longer charge fees.
How do they, how do you regulate where they're going to park and how long they're going to be there and whether it's going to be a...
Where they be wanted at that point? It would simply be as long as they want to at their own discretion. If it's in a public right-of-way, I mean, they could park there for a short time, but if you wanted to consider having them still fill out a form, just no fee to go over the form, we could do that and just kind of guideline that portion of it. But right now, as it stands, when people fill out a mobile truck form, they fill out the general information for it, and then that's pretty much it, and then they charge a fee. The fee generally goes to a background check, and that's, that's pretty much it. After that, they're gone, but most food trucks just stay for a short period, and then they're, after the event's gone, then they're out of, they're out of town anyway.
Has it been a problem then parking where they shouldn't park?
Most of the time, they park either, no, not really. I mean, it's going to be on private property. If it's a private event, they park on private property. If it's a public event, but, or a private event that they want to use for like, usually it would come off a street closure. Somebody might submit a street closure, they'll close off a portion of the street to have the food trucks parked there, or the food trucks would park in the parking lots adjacent to the street anyway, so we haven't had a lot of issue with that. I think some of the concern generally would be safety. If, if the food trucks are facing the street, people have to walk into the street, that's just something we'd want to address. And we always let people know that if you're having a private event, you can't pull up the sidewalk, so there's kind of, just, just doing stuff like that.
Well, no trash pickup, and we have a problem with having to clean up after when they're gone?
I don't know. However, you want to comment on that, how do you handle that with food trucks?
I've never seen any additional, you know, associated with them. I think some, like maybe a trash can would be more of a, but other than that, we haven't had a thing.
Lance, is there a new chief interim? Do you have any safety concerns with food trucks that you've seen? Any high crime rates or vandalism?
No. Okay, what we want to do, waive the fees? I'm motioning to waive the fees for food trucks.
I see.
Motion by Michael, second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And we'll do our best to keep each one of us to five minutes or less. The service delivery, as you know, is built upon a vision statement established by the community, which has got a vibrant community, growing and accessible to... A vibrant community, growing and accessible to a destination for a family oriented active lifestyle. The mission of the city of Godders to work cooperatively and efficiently to provide a vibrant community that's growing and accessible for our neighbors. We aim to be a destination for a family oriented active lifestyle with the values being people first, stewardship. Solution oriented, collaborative, effective, and efficient. Uh, this is our strategic cycle. I won't go through it all in detail, but suffice to say, we build off the mission, the, uh, mission and vision. And then we have the scorecards, which then is what we use to determine our, uh, success or failings with this. Uh, but of course, at the backbone of this and at the bottom of the triangle is the, uh, resource allocation through the budget process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Terry to, uh, do the admin report.
Okay. So, uh, staff prepared over 1,035 pages in briefing materials and agendas for eight sessions of the city council. Uh, we had, uh, 55, uh, agenda items processed, five ordinance adopted, 18 resolutions. Uh, serum, malt, beverage permits are normally done in the first quarter of the year, so we did not have any of those. And, um, none of the other compliance issues invoiced or submitted. Uh, human resources, uh, we have 30 employees. Uh, we had one insurance claim, one accident report. We had 695 vacation hours compared to 391 last year, probably because of COVID, nobody was going on vacation. Uh, we had 214, uh, sick hours, uh, comparable to 245, uh, the first, or second quarter last year. We had 525, uh, overtime hours. Utility building, uh, we've increased our customers to 1,964 in the second quarter. Sewer customers have gone up to 1,877. We could, uh, collected $810 for reconnect fees. Um, our balance of bad debt keeps going up. It's at $35,705 now. We did move 2,231 into bad debt. Uh, $223 is uncollectible, whether it's, um, bankruptcies or death. And staff is preparing to make rate adjustments, uh, based on the newly adopted water and sewer ordinance. The August billing, which is July usage, will reflect the rate changes. Uh, accounts payable, we had, uh, issued 349 checks, processed 463 invoices. Um, total paid invoices was a million, 358,139. And contributing to that total was also funding request from Cloverleaf Farm. Phase two for $194,075 and 75 cents. And legal publications for all of the phase two. Municipal court, um, jail fees have gone up to 1,130 compared to 787 last year. We had 218 cases filed. Again, the 68 from last year was due to COVID. We had four diversions granted, 14 dismissals. Uh, 16 of the cases were paid in full, two in 30 days, and 22 paid over three to six months. And we issued 24 warrants. And that concludes my report.
Excuse me. Good evening, and here is the quarterly report from the police department. Um, as you can see here, that you've been provided prior to the council meeting, you can see the cases are about on average for where we were at in the last few years. Traffic citations, or I should say quarterly cases, um, 256 for this quarter. 139 traffic citations, 338 traffic warnings, 35 arrests, 88 billing checks. 32 public, uh, community contacts. 12 motor assists, nine alarms, and five license plate reader cases this quarter. For the animal control, um, we had a total of 18 animal control calls just in this quarter. 16 were at large and, uh, one animal neglect, one was a missing case. Thankfully, no homicides this quarter. Assault batteries were nine, three sex crimes, one auto theft, seven theft, two burglary, one DUI, one financial fraud. 53 outside agency assists and eight drug arrests, or eight drug cases with 24 warrant arrests. Traffic accidents, uh, just in this quarter, they've increased just a little bit. Um, I think in the, uh, department report, I, uh, did a comparison for quarterly one. Or quarter two for 2020 and 2021, it was an increase of 20% for those two quarters. Uh, this total, um, was 24. Zero fatalities, four injury, 18 non-injury crashes, two courtesy reports. Four of those 24 crashes were red light related. And 10 of the 24 crashes were US 54 related or on US 54. Some of the second quarter community involvement, we had two notable things. The chief for a day, which was Lauren Applegate, uh, that occurred in the end of June. And then we had, uh, two separate child passenger safety technician installation, um, completions. For people that have reached out to us to have assistance with their, uh, professionally having their car seat inspected. And instructed on the proper fit for that. Some of the second quarter training was defensive track, defensive tactics instructor school, the TASER instructor school, police records and management conference. Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police Conference, the Child Passenger Safety Technician Course. Americans for Effective Law Enforcement Conference that I attended, and death investigation that two members attended. Just, if you're curious and Matt says I still have some more time, I'll, uh. I'll let you know of some cases for some interest here, um, that weren't included on this slide. But a traffic stop, in this quarter, a traffic stop for a stolen license plate led to the recovery of that plate, a large amount of cash. Uh, drug paraphernalia and 160 grams of meth. Another case was where a resident vandalized a newly poured concrete pad in Linear Park, causing it to be removed and poured. Security cameras captured the incident and an alert public works employee located the suspect vehicle leading to his summons to court and reimbursement of the costs. Another traffic stop for a headlight violation resulted in the arrest of an identified gang member charged with, uh, felon possessing a loaded handgun. Drug paraphernalia and personal use amount of cocaine. And lastly, of the notable cases this quarter, a traffic stop for a registration violation turned into a pursuit, which was disregarded by the officer. Uh, the suspect was later apprehended by WPD following a pursuit of their own with a physical fight. And the suspect possessed illegal narcotics, stolen property, and a handgun. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
There you go. This is my favorite, favorite report.
Yeah, they're awesome. And we've been busy, so. So this quarter, um, we circulated 9,622 items. Over 5,300 of those were in June, so we went up 3,300 from May to June in circulation. Um, we had 209 new patrons in this quarter. And we processed 404 new items. Um, we offered 122 programs. And our library attendance is up. Everything's going up. So our numbers are looking good, or like I said, we've been really busy over there. Um, so we did, we've been partnering with lots of local businesses for summer reading and for other things. Our, our kits that we were doing, our early literacy kits and our garden. Um, so those are our partnerships. We also partnered with, uh, Main Street Salon to purchase, they helped us purchase, um. One of our Tanganika passes that are now for checkout. We have two that have, that let five people go, um, into Tanganika. And there's five feeder passes on that, so families can check those out now. Um, and we've actually had, there's 26 holds on it right now, so there's 26 families waiting to go. And we've already checked it out 22 times since the end of May, so, for both of those, so, yes, people are enjoying those. Um, this is our outside space. We actually updated our, upgraded our digital signs so we can use, um, better graphics on it now. And we added the garden, which, um, Verana, Chiropractic, Home Depot, and then South Central Kansas Library System. We got a grant from them and then the other two donated for the garden space, so it's been, it makes the front look a lot nicer. Um, we've updated the trail story walk. We actually have an app now, so if you download the Kansas your libraries app, you can put in your library card and look at your, um, account. And renew your items and that, and everybody's liking that. And, what else? Summer reading's going really well. A lot of those, we actually had, um. With donations and then, um, donations of prizes from restaurants and stuff, we had over $12,000 that were donated for the summer reading program this year. So, yeah, we've had a lot of support from area businesses. I know we had over 600 people sign up for, um, summer reading this year. Which last year we had 250, so we increased that a lot. That's why we've been busy. So, and then the middle school came and did a, it was in the paper, we saw it was in the Times Sentinel, um, did a mural for us in the teen area, so. And there, so there's an app for the green stack, so, um, and it makes it a lot easier for us and for people, so they can just come in. They get notified when they hit a prize level and they come in and say we hit it and we click their little box and we pick it up, so. Makes our life nice and easy.
Is rolling Greek continuing?
They will be here Wednesday, but yes, we eat, I, I like it when they're here because I can at least eat there once a week, but anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, honorable mayor council. I'll try to keep it quick as well. Hope it works a little bit by the number.
Matt, you got 10 minutes.
No, I won't wait. Quarter two, we had, we'd prepared 271 potholes. We swept 296 land miles, um, and saw five signs. We did not plant any trees in the second quarter because normally that's done, um, in the winter and fall. Um, we had 21 service shut offs. You'll notice there were none last year due to COVID. Um, meter re-reads are going down. We had 301 for the second quarter last year. We've got 201 this year and we're still chipping away at that. Water gallons used were pretty close to last year, about 500,000 gallons less, probably associated with people being back to work. Last spring they were home. Uh, we actually had 16 valves. We did 187 water and sewer locates. That's down. Um, it slowed down a little bit as Cloverleaf Home Buildings slowed down. As soon as their next phase picks up and rustic, that will pick up as well. Our average well depth, um, went up a little bit to 43.33 feet. Um, daily inflow at the wastewater plant is 439,000 gallons. That's an average for the quarter. Up a touch from Q2 of 2020. And we met all of our KDHC permit standards. I want to, um, do a little comparison of year to date, 21 to 20 on a couple items. One is water used. We're approximately halfway to what we used last year. Now, keep in mind, we will probably get pretty close to what we used last year when the heat gets, hits again in the next couple of months, the usage will go up. Replaced, oops, sorry, replaced three valves last year. There's, there was one valve replaced. Oh, we have one main break. Five last year. And our wells are staying about average depth. We're also looking about on track for our daily inflow of influence to the wastewater plant. Um, some of the accomplishments this quarter, um, everybody's seen it in the part. We had 12 new pads poured and installed 12 benches. Those are, have been very well received by public. Um, and as every spring, we prepared the pool and splash pad for opening. And we had to replace on warranty the splash pad bucket. It had a crack in it probably from extreme cold, so we replaced it as well. Streets and right of ways, some of the things we've done was, we had the street damage repaired at Fifth and Craig in Pate. We, um, I want you to see the picture here. We repaired a large hole on 183rd where people were driving off Dave from there and then into the dirt. Um, made a big pothole. We replaced faulty fire hydrant on the North Frontage Road and then replanted parking lines at the parks. And obviously, as every year, we do mowing and right of way maintenance, we do continue to sweep streets and full puddles. Water drainage, one of the big ones is, um, well seven is up and running now. It went back online last Friday. It's, everything's working well. Um, we're running about 530 gallons per minute on that. The only thing that needs to be done is we're waiting for the VFDV D to be delivered and installed, but it's operational at this point. We conducted major repairs of the generator at the water tower complex, had to put a new timing cover on it. It broke. Um, repair damage done to infrastructure and Cloverleaf Farms. They had a subcontractor in the duplexes that. Basically just run roughshod over our water infrastructure, the meters and the meter cans. So TW Custom Homes hired a gentleman, um, to come out and oversee that and we've been working with him to square that away. They were paying for parts. We did the labor. And as I said before, we met all of our KDHC water quality requirements. In the wastewater plant, we began replacing the, um, air actuator lines and conduit at the, at the plant. As always, we're doing, we have mitigation on the lagoon dice because KDHC requires this too, and again, we met our standards there. Fleet, um, nothing big going, sign going on fleet right now. We had a, a dump truck had a power stream pump blowout. Doesn't sound like a big deal, but when it dumps more out than you can put in, it took it out of service, so we're glad to get it fixed. Um, our third quarter preview, some of our goals we want to hit is we want to extend the sidewalk and install an ADA compliant ramp. On South Main Street at 23rd Street on the west side of the road. Um, we are also going to work, and this was a second quarter goal, but unfortunately the rain stopped, is we're going to mitigate the drainage issues. At Linear, and whoa, that, those two kind of went together. Sorry about that. Mitigate the drainage issues on industrial road. And we're going to install crash, trash cans and concrete pads at Linear. That has already been done. We were going to start that day, but the rain again bit us. And we will plant crosswalks and prepare for schools, for school to start, and we will do transmission line maintenance. Any questions?
So this is going to be second quarter community development. So in terms of building permits, uh, single family is obviously going to continue to increase. In this particular case, over the last quarter, we had a small decrease. But for the most part, we've seen multifamily increasing more of, since I think more people are seeing that they can put more duplexes around the area, so they're trying to see that increase. Commercially, we had two over 2020, quarter two. Total project value was 4.7 million, permit value is 24,000. And overall, we saw a 25% increase over, uh, last year's quarter two. So this is kind of the same. 2021 quarter two, 24,000. 2021 quarter two, 4.7 million. Code compliance, the blue line is our 2020 tracker and then, uh, 2021 is our orange tracker. It generally is going to be around the same. We see some ups and downs, um, once it gets warmer, more mull compliance issues and, um, definitely during COVID, we saw more, um. Uh, I think in 2020, say the year, we saw more RVs and boats being parked. Um, so not necessarily illegally, but against code, and, and so we're trying to keep on track of that. Uh, in terms of aggregate value over time, we've mapped, uh, appraised value of everything within Goddard city limits. Since, uh, 2008, we see, this is a general increase in 83%, so if you're going to look at percent delta from 2008 to 2021. We've seen 83% increase in the residential, 48% commercial, 534% agricultural. And obviously that's going to be a higher percentage because it's a smaller number versus the other ones. And same for commercial, we've seen a, a large spike in value in terms of appraised value for all of our commercial properties, so the trend is an up and up. So the trend is up and up. And planning commission, we met January, February, March for the first quarter and then April, May and June for second quarter. April was Devon State's replac primary, Devon State's replac final. May was sign regulations, design standards, zoning, commercial, residential, mixed use, zoning, rural, urban, ten, zoning, high density R4 zoning map and annexation. Some of these things were discussed on the May 10th joint meeting that we had the planning commission and city council. And in June, we had sign regulations, design standards, sort of a mix of this and going through the approval process. And that's, that's up for me. Questions?
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, so here we have our financial summary for all our funds for the first, second quarter. You can see that our fund balances are higher than they were at the beginning. We got our second half, our, our big chunk of property tax in, in June. So that's where most of that increase happened. So you show here, these three lines, the red is the general funds. You can see that fund balance has gone up since every year. Went down a little bit 2019, but it's been up since, overall since 2018. Bonded interest fund also, that's mostly because of, not because of higher tax revenue, that was just that we've got more general obligation and temporary debt. So there's, we've got the higher fund balance there for dealing with that. And per strategy, our, our highway fund, street balance has gone down somewhat, but we've been intentionally trying to drop its carrying balance of over a million dollars down to a more appropriate amount. And this here is showing their water fund. Because the blue line has gone up slightly and sewer is up overall. But again, we're going to see these start to not go up quite so much once our new rates go into effect beginning of next month or beginning of August. This is just a summary of revenue and expenses for the general fund. As you can see, we're overall for about 75% of our budgeted revenue for the year, about 37% of our budgeted expenditures. We're right on pace with where we want to be. Property tax, year to year since back to 2017, you can see we're, we're up. And that's just because of our assessed valuation growth. We get a budget later, we'll explain, we'll see more of that going forward. We had a pretty nice valuation increase this year or last. Sales tax revenue. We are up this year again. We were, it looks like we were down overall last year, but we weren't. We were actually up considerably last year. It's just that there was a lag in collections being remitted to us though. But by the end of, by the end of the year, we were, we were up considerably, all four categories, sales tax deployed. It's just, this is just a breakdown of where our, what our tax revenue sources have been through basically half the year with over 55% coming, property tax, the biggest next chunk is sales tax. By the end of the year, that'll be more evened out, but we'll have a pretty even split with more so on sale, the sales tax side than property tax. We just collect, you know, about 93, 94% of our property tax by the middle of the year. That's why it's higher right now is where we collect sales tax regularly every month. This just shows general fund by department expenditures to date versus budget. Overall, I think so we're about 37%. So we'll have one more, well, three more chunks of transfers will take place for a few years. That'll, that'll, that's one of the reasons it looks a little bit low is because normally we would have done the second transfer by now. I don't want to go into all the budgets, how to do that. Otherwise, everything else is about right on pace where it should be for this time of year. This is just a breakdown of where our expenditures go for the general fund. The biggest chunk of it, over 15% is public safety, which basically that's police, most of that's police operations. And then we got a little bit in general government, some in the recreation culture, which is parks, the pool. We have some expenditures for economic, community, economic development, which includes planning and the other areas might get in charge of. And so this is just a summary of the water fund. We're about 43% of budgeted revenue for the year and about 38% of budgeted expenditure. And that does include the payoff of the water loan, but we're still doing the transfer. Basically, essentially we'll be shifting from debt service to transfers because those, the new refinance we did for our water service debt will be paid through the bonded interest funds. We'll be transferring. What we had been essentially paying directly out of the debt service line here, in the future, those will go toward transfers instead of debt service because we're transferring that to the other fund to make the debt payments. Same for sewer, about 51% of budgeted revenue, 40% of budgeted expenditure. And street fund, we're about 34% of budgeted revenue. And again, most of that comes from a transfer from the general fund. So that will, that's, we're not in a worries there. We haven't made that second transfer yet. And then we're about 30% of budget expenditure. That does not include any of our regular street maintenance we do. We don't pay for any of that. So that's why those were, that presented so low for this time of year. And that's all I've got for the quarterly report. If you'd like to join me for a budget discussion, unless you have any questions about the financials.
Questions? Thank you, Matt.
So 2022 proposed budget, so far we've looked at the water and sewer fund. We've looked at all the special revenue and our non-operating funds. So now we're going to get into our three tax levy funds, which is general fund, which is most of our regular operations, including all of our public safety operations, our municipal court, our administration, et cetera. And then we do, our library fund is included with this. And basically for that fund, that is just, we're collecting three mills on behalf of the library that we, we serve as a pass through for them. So we levy the three mills, but we remit it to them as soon as we get those, as soon as we get those receipts. And then our bond interest fund, which we levy a mill. So what the budget does, it serves as a comprehensive plan for the city, which will be 2022. Defines how we operates and sets our community's investment priorities based on the government bodies' goals and objectives. For 30, 31 full time, or that should be 30, 30 full time positions, including city administrator and admin, finance director by position, the city clerk, community development director, accounts payable clerk, which is Lori, municipal court clerk is Kathy. Sarah is our customer service specialist. And then.
Thatcher's.
Thatcher's are listed too.
Hey, at least you didn't call him the player to be named later.
The budget funds 14 police positions, which includes a chief of police and a police lieutenant. Currently, we have one person serving both those roles. He will not be paid for both positions. But we have, even though we don't have, we don't have, we do have two sergeants right now. But we don't, I think, how many officer positions are we empty right now?
One.
We have one up, but again, we always budget for the full staffing. So we're sure that when we do get full, we'll have the resources to pay for, you know, salary benefits plus all the other, you know, vehicles, everything else that goes along with those businesses. We have eight public works crew, including public works director, five crew members and two wastewater treatment operators. Or at least they're, I'm not sure if they're actually certified as that, but I know Mike is. But we, we fund two public work positions completely out of the sewer fund, whereas the other positions are funded through water service. The budget we're presenting does not fund our capital improvement projects. Those are funded through our capital improvement budget, which we've gone over already early in the year. Also, we're presenting a budget that does not change the mill levy, maintains the mill levy we levied last year. General fund. So I'm going to just go over this quickly, but the far left column is, these are actual numbers for 2020. The year 2020, what we actually spent, or in this case revenues, what we actually received in revenue. The second column here, this is 2021, this will be adopted for the current operating year. This is the estimate, what we were estimating based on current revenue to how the year will end. And then this is what we're proposing for the budget year, this we're projecting into the following year. This top line here is fund balance. So for instance, we adopted a budget for this year, assuming that we would have a fund balance of 811,000. We actually started the year with 1.5 million in general fund fund balance. So we, you know, we basically, you know, spent less or received more than we thought we were going to. So again, we're, our proposed budget here, we're assuming we'll have a starting mill levy of 1.5 million based on our estimate for this year. So like I said earlier, when I was talking about revenue, we're a little bit higher in sales tax for our estimate than property tax. But that's because, you know, we have our, our city sales tax now, most of which we transfer out to capital improvement fund for, for our capital projects. But still it's, we get a, the county share sales tax, we fact forever. That does go to fund some of our general fund operations. As far as general fund expenditures, our, the biggest areas always is personnel services, which is salary and benefits for employees. We're about 43,000 more than proposed budget, than what we adopted last year for general fund. As I said, that includes all of, all of our police department, includes our community development director, court clerk, a quarter of the rest of the admin administrative costs. We're increasing transfers slightly, but I'll get into that later. So general government includes administration, which is, you know, admin staff. Mayor and city council, which is what we levy on behalf of the council. City hall, which are operational costs similar to this building, includes mostly contractual commodities. And then our operations, our municipal court. And admin is broken down two ways by the department for what the expenditures are for. And then of course for, by the type of area that that includes. So this is admin. You'll notice that we're slightly lower in personnel costs this year over last year. That's because last year we had a portion of two positions we're getting paid for in, out of this cost center that have been split out to municipal court and to, for MICA, into planning and zoning and code enforcement. So that, so they're not, they're no, the, I think it was half a position was included in admin last year. It's not clear enough, so that's why we're a little bit lower overall. And also, we're still officially, we're going to be budgeting this capital discretionary line item. But we're not including it in the actual budget book anymore or the, or the graphical budget that we put out because it's, we're not really planning to spend that money. And when we do include it here, it shows a much lower ending fund balance than what we actually think the fund balance is going to be. So we're leaving it out now for, for this, just for the way that we present this in our budget book. And that's where, that's where these charts went through. Mayor and council, I increased something this year. You guys, commodities and supplies, I think we had, we just put aside some extra money for computer equipment for you guys next year. City hall, we've kept this budget, we lowered it a little bit again. I think it was lower than, lower costs for some of the stuff that we do. But overall, it's not, that doesn't even change. Court, we did reduce contractual services. We've been running a fairly high, in budget, we kept a fairly high number in for legal services for several years. We've never got close to it. So I took some of that out this year to better reflect what it will actually be. We just don't have, especially last year with, you know, the court not operating for several months because of the pandemic. We just did not have our usual number of, what we pay out for our judge, our prosecutors, et cetera. So. Law enforcement, this includes police, admin, community outreach and animal control. I've got it, like I said, oh, sorry, I've got it broken down by cost center at the top and then by how the, what's actually being paid for there in the bottom, just as a comparison. Police administration, this is our, this is where, this is just general police services. We're 100% of the police salaries and benefits are paid. The capital outlay line item here, this is for fleet purchases. So last year, they did two vehicles, but costs have gone up. So we're, I increased that by 50,000. So I'll build a pay for two vehicles going forward and next year. Community outreach, this is a, we included this a couple of years ago when they started doing the bike patrol. I don't know if they're, they still got anybody doing that, but we still do put aside some money for just stuff that they do with directly interacting with community. Like they do the bike rodeo and things like that. And there's, there's always a little connection to stuff they buy for, for doing that. And there's, we usually give some money there too for special uniforms for like the bike patrol and things like that. Animal control, this is, a lot of, a lot of times this is going to be stuff like equipment and also costs for the yard at Mary Clinic where we house animals sometimes. Recreation culture, this is the pool, parks and recreation, which is operational costs at our park system. Operational costs in the community center, library services. That is cost associated with the library building itself, library operations, $25,000. We subsidize the library's operations with, we've been doing it for a couple of years now. And then community events, that's our special event that the city puts on that we, like our jazz in the park and things like that. Everything's pretty much staying the same in the pool. I think I increased contractual a little bit for things like utilities. I know we had, we had some higher costs, slightly higher costs for utilities, everything like that, just like we have everywhere else. Parks and recreation, again, higher costs for contractual and that sort of thing is pretty much the same. Community center, again, this is just our cost for, you know, operations at the building, building that flat. And then our library services, again, and that's just, that's specific to the library building itself. It's the, the maintenance costs, the things we have for the actual building itself. Library operations, which again, that's our, $25,000 the city gives to the library. Keep them at the same, of course. And then our community events, we're making that what we lifted last year. Community development, this is all MICA stuff. I pretty much kept everything relatively flat. There were some areas where we had over budgeted, certain things under budgeted others. So I just made everything closer, but reflecting what it would probably be next year. There are administrative real operational changes there. So. And then transfers, I'm increasing the transfer to the street fund by $3,000. That, the way we've always figured that, that transfer is it's three quarters of the prior year's central county sales tax that we receive. So essentially our county sales tax that we receive, three quarters of that funds our street operations. And that, that number is what we're reflecting there. And that's all that is. We're continuing to transfer $600,000 a year to the capital improvement fund. And that's our city sales tax. That's almost all of our city sales tax that we transfer there. We also transfer 50,000 to the equipment reserve fund. And the four main operating funds all are going to ideally be transferring that amount going forward. So we get a total of $200,000 a year going into the equipment reserve fund, but it's funded from four different, four different places. So it's, it's not relying on any one particular fund. particular fund. And then we do fifty thousand dollars a year in special parks and rec to, A, build up the fund balance there, but also to pay for smaller parks and rec improvements, like, you know, we're doing the, we do benches and things like that, trees and stuff like that, that's where, that's where, that's why we transfer many of their, that, out of the general fund. Bonded interest fund, this is the debt service funds, where we fund all of our, making our payments on our debt, and we also receive special, specials into this fund for retirement of debt for our subdivisions. And you see here the new things that were added, here at the bottom, this is transfers from the water and sewer fund, because we refinanced the water and sewer debt, because it's always being paid out of the bonded interest fund now. We always do this cash basis reserve line item, which essentially what we're doing here is balancing out any potential G O bonds that we'll, we may do during the year. I put a big number in there this year because we have been doing, we have had more subdivisions coming online, I want to make sure that we've got plenty of budget authority in case we do have to issue debt, retire temporary notes, retire G O bonds, et cetera, so that's why that number's so high. Probably not actually going to receive or spend that much, but I'm giving us the budget authority to do so if, if we need to. Statement of debt capacity, this is just a, something that shows where our, how much, you know, debt we have, and how much, you know, how much, how close we are to going over our debt limit. As you can see here, total outstanding general obligation debt is twenty-four million, but we've got an initial debt capacity of seven point five, so we're not anywhere close to being, you know, having, we're not, we do have a lot of debt that we're carrying, but again, most of this is for subdivisions or, and all of that, of course, is, you know, going to be paid for through special assessments. We've got some, and most, that includes most of the ten notes, for instance. We do have the 2020 dash one, which is our contribution to the Starline project, and... So that will, that will of course be, we're paying that back through revenue collected on, on the, it's the property taxes in the district, so, but that, we don't, we don't have to make a principal payment on that for, until, it was twenty, twenty twenty-three. And again, library fund, this is just where we, you know, we collect their property tax, the property tax, the three mills that we levy on their behalf, which includes ad lorm tax, which is just general property tax, plus there'll be some for motor vehicle, RV, sixteen twenty meter trucks, commercial vehicle, and watercraft. So that's, those numbers are all generated by our, the spreadsheets we use to determine our tax levy. So, and I always budget in the prior year remaining fund balance, so I can hopefully get that fund balance down to zero by the end of the year. So, I think based on what I've, what I've got in place, we should be able to do that pretty easily. This is an overall budget for the entire operation, this includes transfers, and it includes those, you know, bond proceeds, it includes our debt service, it includes transfers in and out, so, but this next page here, I call this the operating budget, and this is just expenditures of revenue, not inter-fund stuff. So, for instance, the, you know, the, we had a expenditure of seventeen and a half million on this page, but again, ten million of that is transfers between the funds, so we took that out here, so we've got a much more, we're still, according to this, we're still, you know, spending more than we're levying, but a lot of that is intentional, because, you know, for our street fund in particular, we are trying to spend down some of that fund balance, and we're carrying extra fund balance, the more than we usually do into the general fund beginning next year, so. And then, this is our budget summary page that we have to publish in the paper prior to our budget public hearing, and like I said, it shows here that we're doing the same mill levy that we budgeted last year, one, three mills goes to the library, one, two, the debt service fund, and then twenty-nine point two-two-six to the general fund, which shows our total budget authority for all those, for those three funds, and then our budget authority for our other operating funds, including the CID for Fund for Tangan Dico, which is where we collect the CID sales tax that they levy now, and we put in enough budget authority to pay them out whatever they receive, that's, they haven't actually collected three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but by the end of, by the end of the 2022 budget year, it's possible that they would have, so I put that much fund balance in there for them to, so we can pay that out to them if they're, they submit their, the documentation they need to be reimbursed for their improvements. Now, so, the, 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 the new budget law goes into effect this year, and so normally we would have already approved budget by now, because I like to get it done early, and we had to submit, the last, the last day to publish, the public hearing notice was August fifth, and I always, we usually did that in June or July, so we were always ahead of the boat, but because of the new budget law going into effect this year, we can't hold our budget hearing and our revenue neutral rate hearing until after August tenth. So, I had, I had, I had assumed that we were going to hold the budget hearing on September seventh, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day, but Brian tells me he's not going to be here, and I would like him to, of course, be here for that, so we can either have a special meeting anytime between August tenth and, well, it would have to be, it would have to be either a special meeting after August sixteenth, or we could have it on August sixteenth, the regular meeting. And what we'll do is we will have our traditional budget hearing, but right before that, we'll have a separate budget hearing for anyone to protest the revenue neutral rate, meaning that, if you see here, where I have the, where I have the, it's right here where I have the total mill levy that we're going to levy, which is the same as what we did last year, and actually a little bit less than what we did with the, the actual mill levy from two years before. So this three point zero five five, if we were going to levy the same number of tax dollars that we levied in this year's budget, we would have to lower our mill levy down to that to get to that number. And so, the state wants us to hold a separate public hearing for people to protest if they would want to, that we are levying more in actual tax dollars, even though we're keeping the same tax rates. So that's why we have to have a separate, a separate public hearing for that, and, but if we, I think if we, if we wanted to go with the revenue neutral rate and levy, you know, almost, almost three mils lower than what we did last year, we would have, we still had time to do it that way, and we wouldn't have to have that second public hearing, but we would lose out on all of the, basically the new, new growth we've had. And like I said, we've got that three point four million dollar G O bond, we're going to start paying principal payments on it in a couple of years, and if we're not capturing our new growth in the Starbon district, there goes the revenue source of that, those bond payments, so, anyway. I've already notified the county, we were going to, like I said, I notified the county, we were going to have the, the August seventh meeting, where Brian's not going to be here for, and I think the plan was that we were not going to have a meeting at all that day because of that, so if you'd like me to change our notice, I got to do it tonight, but I can change our notice to the county that we can have that, that budget hearing on the sixteenth of August instead.
What time would it be?
It'd be a regular meeting, so seven o'clock.
It's our regularly scheduled meeting.
Oh.
So, it goes to you guys, sixteen?
And so what, the way it'll work is, we'll have, we'll open the revenue neutral rate hearing, just like we normally open the budget hearing, anybody that's here to protest or speak on anything about it can come up in, after three minutes or whenever you decide what to do, we'll close that hearing, then we'll open the regular budget hearing, we'll do the same thing, allow the public to comment. This will be my, I think this is my eleventh budget, and nobody's ever commented on it, which is great, but, you know, which means nobody's, nobody's paying attention to what I do either, so, but then we'll close, close that public hearing, and then, and then at that point, you can, we'll, we'll adopt the budget, and Ryan's already looked at the sample ordinance that we, we have to pass now. We used to have to do a, we used to have to do an ordinance.
This is the new ordinance, only there's a public hearing with it, so.
So we'll pass that ordinance.
We did an ordinance every year.
And, but, so.
Tonight, so, we'll do the ordinance tonight?
No.
Okay.
We'll do it at the August sixteenth meeting.
Okay.
So, if you have any questions about budget tonight, or, we'll have another meeting, the beginning of, the first meeting in August, if you have questions then to address, please let me know, and I will provide any additional detail you need. But if you're okay with what the budget we presented, then we can just, just plan on having that, those budget hearings on the sixteenth and approve that night.
Well, they're not complaining, so.
Okay.
They know the, thank you, man.
Sorry, I went over my phone a minute too.
Honorable mayor and council, since I always give the number of units and the tax generation and meter counts and stuff, I, I'm going to try and just do that once a month now. Give you just pictures so you can see kind of where we're at, you can see construction started on that third floor at the Starbon site, with the health club being fully enclosed and attached to the, this right here is the competitive swimming venue with the water park here, and then you can't really see it on the other side, it's the childcare facility.
Do we know, hold the bag, the hole?
Not yet. And just view of some of the construction of Arden Creek, looking back to the northwest toward the elementary school, where we are. And Cloverleaf, this comparison of the road progress for phase two on July sixth, and then today on July nineteenth. Outbridge, some construction there on the final phase, and Rustic Creek, which you can kind of start to see the outline of the roads through there, which they've been kind of hampered with, with the rains. Just to let you know too, we did receive for the frontage road realignment, the state's acknowledgement and completion, and they reimbursed us for the construction costs for that, and that was, the construction was a hundred percent financed by, by KDOT. Saw this earlier with the Cedar property, just saying that the resolution provides until July twenty-second, if the permits pulled up until September twentieth, and then we'll look at considering the demolition on the second, and then as far as what we want to look at doing down the road, that can be an, an item for discussion on the sixteenth of August, when, so the attorney Ryan Peck will be available at that time. And then we've got July second, our presentation for the audit, we'll have the zoning classification for rural urban, and the Kellogg corridor projects we'll have, which is the R Cut, the connector, and one eighty-third, and Trans Systems will be here to provide an overview and kind of also, I think, give a better explanation than, than, than what I could for kind of the knock-on effect when we have, when we add the connector into the R Cut, and what kind of design changes and plan reviews that that undertakes, and how having the one eighty-third intersection coordinated with the construction of the R Cut and sequenced so that the traffic signals are all integrated to minimize stop times for all involved, we'll have the sign regulations and building design standards for the sixteenth, and then we'll also have our budget hearing at that time as well. So that concludes my report.
Larry? What do you got?
Well, one thing I'd like to make a clarification on what I expect to have at the community center, we talked about two toning it, but two toning it, I'm not sure whether one of the two tones is around the window trim, the door trims, or what, the corners, and on the rough line, or the, anything that is a site, it's a different tone, or exactly what it is.
Oh, this is clever. Yeah, so it was the windows, right? The windows and then the pillars, right?
We've had all that repaired, yes. I think what Councilman Zirin was asking is if, when the trim is painted, does the council want all the trim, the trim above where the, where the gutters are, and around the windows, and the pillar, and everything painted trim color, or do we want to leave it the color of the body?
Trim color.
That includes the corner, moldings going down the corner, or the siding matches the corner?
No, no, that'd be the same color as the, yeah, same color. The corner moldings will be the same color.
The base color or the trim color?
The base color.
What's he want to say?
Corner moldings, corner moldings coming down?
I'm, I'm fine.
They're always the same color, just a, yeah, right?
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay.
Basically, just around the windows and the pillars and the doors, right?
Right. It was Saturday morning, right?
Well, I just, I just didn't want.
Next Saturday morning, seven AM?
I'll have to get over to Boy Scouts, because I don't think that they're going to have, he's going to have a tone this Saturday.
Next, not this Saturday, next Saturday.
Larry, and Luke called me last week, and he stated that they were going to do it the thirtieth, the thirty-first, and the first.
Thirtieth, thirty? It's on Friday?
So, I believe he's going to start on Friday and go Saturday, Sunday, based on our last conversation.
And I wasn't sure whether we needed any help with the bumper truck to do the backside of buildings, it's so high, and the steps are everywhere we came in with them.
We didn't do the, the, what's it called, huh?
Yeah.
It's going to be a blanket.
Are you spraying it or?
You know, like, you know.
A man lift, is that?
Man lift, right.
There is, is this something that we want to talk about outside the council meeting?
Yeah.
That would be easier, that would be easier. We just wanted that.
It'll just be here.
One fourth of the, of the force.
We'll have it here Friday, that's fine.
Pictures, but not good in action.
For the past fifteen years or so, ever since this park started, I've been dealing with it, and I've been trying to get some action done on those three lots of the rail road. And I don't know if as a council, we can just try and intervene on it, and take it over and then put a parking lot there, because we've been buying it, and we haven't been charging it for it, I don't know if we can go backwards then, saying, okay, you've always for twenty years worth of loan, and okay, I'm up here against the land, I don't know.
Hey, there we go.
I guess we've talked.
What's that?
Those three lots next to the.
Next to the park, between the park and the pool, the rail road owns up to three lots of, of, on the road.
We signed it out?
Those are the rail bank lots?
Well, those are the rail bank, but I think.
We've been loading it for fifteen years.
You're going to take adverse possession?
Yeah.
Trying to get a hold of railroad, like pulling teeth.
Uh, yeah, it's not that easy. We'd have to file a quiet title lawsuit against them to claim ownership via adverse possession, and I'd have to dig into the facts to determine whether it meets all of the requirements of adverse possession.
Somebody else needs to be mayor of a.
And they all like, and we have to serve the railroads, and the railroad would give notice of a lawsuit, and there's, I mean, they're going to respond, and that's kind of the way it works.
Would that not be part of the rail bank that, Larry travelers would get?
We, we looked at this extensively with attorneys, and I, I visited with Carl Swartz on this some time ago, and it, the titles are congruent.
And it, the titles are convoluted and messy, so I think we're, our best...
Why don't we just turn it into a block?
I think I've got people on the rail bank.
Where's your name?
For now. I know, I don't, I don't like saying that, but...
And the difficulty with anything that is within the land, the rail, land bank is in theory, the railroad, if they ever decided that they wanted to resume use of the property, I mean, they would have priority and we'd have to remove whatever improvements were on that property. And so I know Brian and I and one of my partners have talked about it, that, you know, if we were to build any structures there and, you know, I can't fathom a scenario where the rail, the railroad would change their mind and decide, hey, now we're going to use the property, but I can't promise it isn't going to happen at some distant point in the future. The city would be out of luck.
But I mean, if it were just a parking lot, we wouldn't be out that much, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, that, that would be a different discussion than, you know, for example, building a new community center on, on a track like that, then come to find out, oh, wow, 20 years from now, we've got to relocate that community center or we're losing it or what?
If you could come in on Sal's, we'd use it for parking lot. And then that would solve our parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, that would, I think that would be less, less at risk in certain things.
I don't know how we could go about getting the land to do that. Now, I don't think that that land is part of the rail bank. I think that was privately owned by the railroad.
Again, I believe that the, the title deeds are...
We could get a ti, I mean, we could get a title report to find out who legally holds a record title to that property. And that's probably the starting point is to figure out who the title company says is the owner and then try to reach out if it's the railroad.
There we go.
But, you know, if it's the railroad that privately owns that property, you know, if, if they're uncooperative, if they're not responsive, you know, I don't know how else to get their attention other than if we could make a valid argument that, you know, we require title via adverse possession. But again, that's going to require filing a lawsuit and asking a judge to make that legal determination. It's messy.
Would that be expensive, having you do that?
That all depends on how far it goes and how much it applies if any of the railroad would put up to, you know, and I'd have to dig into the, the facts and circumstances of our use of exercise and control of that property to, you know, for one, assess whether we can make a reasonable argument that we've acquired title via adverse possession.
And I believe that there's some conflicts with the deeds as far as if it's the railroad or adjacent property owners or whatnot.
But I think the starting point would be, let's get a title report and see what the title company says, who they say the owners.
And I have the council company, chances are they don't want to do that or do they not want to do that?
Sure, get a title report.
Yes, get a title report.
Okay, okay.
All right, I guess that's a start.
Okay.
Thank you. Is that out?
Um, so I had a question for Brooke kind of. Um, when Matt was presenting, he said that we budget for this many employees for the police department, but there's one open position. So, and then he said that we budget for eight employees or we currently have eight employees with the public works. With the growth that our city is going through right now, how soon are we going to need to add to the public works department and how many employees are you thinking?
We're, we're right now advertising the open position and we get good property candidates. Terry and I have discussed this. We'll go through them and decide, um, well, who we want to interview and hopefully get something, we can hire someone. As far as adding positions, that's really a budgetary issue thing and that's something that Matt and I have been discussing. And there are some ways to maybe increase our effectiveness and our efficiency outside of that that we're going to try in the interim before we, before we approach that. So it's a discussion we're having.
It's, it's in my long term, like saying, I mean, we're... I've been saying this forever, but I really got to wait and see what happens when that history is built out.
And I mean, I know, you know, all of our departments, as the city grows, are going to continue to grow. I just, you know, when we have, we have, I don't want to say more important departments than others, but, you know, we can't let our city crumble, the infrastructure crumble because we don't have the staff. So that's...
Right, but you know, and it's, you know, I know that, you know, Fred wanted to hire, Fred wanted to hire two positions for like the entire time he was here. And I know that Brooks, you know, could definitely use help. We could use help here in the building too, but it's, it's, you know, it's something that we're planning, that we, we realize we're going to have to do. And if we do it now, we would, it's just, we got to get a better, we got to be able to wrap our heads around what everything looks, because like I said, we know that every dollar property tax that we collect in that district for at least 10 years is going to have to go to paying back our, that $3.5 million bond. And if there's, look, if there's anything left over, great, but, you know, that's a lot of growth that we're going to have to have in order to get past that threshold of making those bond payments. And, you know, I don't, we've escaped any bad, we, we, we did great last year revenue wise in the pandemic, but that's going to catch up to us eventually. And so, yeah, I understand that, you know, PD needs more people, public works needs more people, but I don't want to commit current resources to adding positions until we have a better idea of what we're going to look like when that, when that albatross is out from around our neck.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure like it was on, regardless of all that.
Because, you know, we've got capital budget stuff that, you know, we, but we, we know we're going to need that, but only once we get, you know, more people in place to do it, so.
Michael?
I want to express my appreciation, all the wonderful work on our staff reports and keeping our facilities up and running. Uh, and kids got to enjoy the splash pad and pool this last weekend, had a great time. Everything was working great, so thank you guys. Probably did.
Do you, Michael?
Right. Well, I think I'm good tonight. It's starting out. I got my speech in earlier.
Well, I don't have anything.
Better stay away from that poison ivy.
I don't have anything. Thank you all. We'll have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Sarah. Second by Michael, all of them to get out.